Ready? Okay, the time is five o'clock. I'd like to follow regular meeting of the Chisholm School Board to order. Lisa, could we please have a roll call?
Director Soder, here.
Director Rice, here.
Director Cardisano, director Laffey, here. Director Casey, here. Orchela.
Here. Okay, units called to order, we have a quorum. Item number two is fellow comment. Ain't nobody out there. Moving on to item number three is recognition of any guests or visitors that wish to address the board. Seeing no one.
Yeah, because you would have signed up already.
Yeah, you didn't sign up, okay. Okay, moving on to item four, I hope you all have the addendum on the motion to approve the consulting agreement between Hibbing and Chisholm and the Watson Consulting Group. This is as we had discussed about joint meetings with Hibbing and things like that, and this will be paid for by IRR. So, that'll be a motion to approve that if the board would like to. Okay, so, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Motion by Shelley.
Support.
Vote by Danielle. Comments or questions on the agenda? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Moving on to item five, reports, Adrian.
So, I did send an email and update you about the phone installation with CTC. There's still some quirkiness to it, but we're gaining ground and making progress. Just received an ARC email notification today about their data breach and their forensics felt strongly that none of the information actually went out anywhere other than they've reached the system to get in, so they felt confident that they could share that at this point. Hope you had a chance to see the WDIO feature on Lemon and STEM and Chisholm. If you didn't, if you go on their website, they did a really nice presentation of promoting some of our staff, and so that was really neat. Business North called me today regarding an article they want to do on not just our new project, but projects across the area and kind of over a hundred years of all these different buildings that have aged out and the new configurations and the new constructions, so that'll be coming out shortly. And by the way, all this happened since Thursday when it was due for me to get this in, so you didn't see it written. Robotics did end up qualifying for state, so that was great in their second year to see that, and then in Jensen, I wanted to, at a meeting with them today, let you know that they're coming on May 8th to give an update with ARI on where we're at with things. They will be meeting in that second loop back with staff this month, and then they met with the admin team, showed a proposal of a possibility of what things look like, and they're going to make some tweaks and come back to the admin team of what that might look like moving forward. So they will be updating you on the 8th. And then Abby Duchene, one of our students, qualified for Nationals in bowling, so. That's positive. And if you're following any of our social media things, might be stepping on Travis's. I didn't know he was coming tonight, so.
I missed my time anyway.
So, was just gonna say that we have a new app layer that we can do things with digitally that we are testing kind of on a one-year trial basis that you'll see an enhanced version of what we've been posting. It's pretty slick, so.
On Facebook?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. So, knowing he, I didn't know he was gonna walk in, but did you have anything to add to that? Because I might not be spelling it out correctly for them.
Well, long story short, it's called Gipper. It's a social media platform that gives me access to thousands of different templates. Today I posted for the first time, three different templates, and there's more. I have more scheduled to post in the next two days. But it's not just athletics, it's academics also, so you'll see a new, tomorrow you'll see a new template for the honor roll, which I think is pretty damn cool. So you'll have to let me know what you think about it, but that's just a small sliver of what comes with Gipper. I'm really excited. I like to be a trendsetter, so I'm the first AD in this entire district that's got Gipper. I think it's gonna, I think more districts are gonna hop on that bandwagon, but I'm glad I'm the first one, so.
We got a pretty good, pretty good rate on it to do it on a trial basis since we are the first to dip the toe in the water here, so I green lighted it and said, let's give it a whirl, and yeah, it's pretty slick.
Travis, is that, will we be able to post stuff on the construction and stuff like that on that site?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The progress and all of that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So Travis, is this, like, is Gipper for schools, or is it just kind of a general?
A lot of, a lot of colleges use it.
Okay.
And they're, they were at the AD conference, and when I went, and they're, they're starting to get into the metro and visit schools, but they were offering a pretty good deal, and so it's up to Adrian, and I had money in my AD account that I used for that, but yeah, it was. So I, I think you're gonna really, really like it. It's very flashy, like it's, it pops when you see it on Facebook.
Is it one, is it one of your announcements for the college announcement? Is that the one?
Yeah.
It's, it's.
It's for Ava.
I did, yeah, I caught that today.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I can see that too, yeah.
So those are, those are new, you know, unique. It's really, I'll do a presentation for you once I'm a little more hands-on with it, but yeah, I'm really excited about it.
And that's all I had, and I knew Mr. Ferdin had some updates, so I'll stop there and let him.
Yeah, don't steal his thunder.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, a couple of updates here, so still working through with Jensen ARI for right sizing the dehumidification for the pool, and so so, so waiting for some feedback, information on that. IE was here today to do some routine air sampling and then also some paint testing in the high school for areas that we need to just work in, so I want to be ahead of that and just get that checked out before we start to do any repairs in there. The snow continues to melt at the track. It looks like we're probably still a week to two weeks out, depends how much rain that we get this this weekend here. That'll really help knock things out, but Ryan and I were up there today and looking at some options, but there again, as tempting as it is to bring out our snow blower and run that down the track, we'd be foolish to do so. So, so we're just being patient as, as hard as it is to be right now.
Old people like to just shovel their snow onto the streets, so why don't you just ask the community to come and?
Yeah, we could have a community shoveling day.
I see all those old people shoveling that snow on us.
Nightmares about shoveling. I'm not going out there.
They're joking around today about hiring the Buffalo Bills staff to come and shovel it. So, but.
I always wonder what those old people are saying.
And then I'm looking into exploring our bus fleet there again. I was looking forward to when the next leases are gonna be up, when, which ones are aging and so on and so forth, so. Exploring buying bus number two, which is a 2019 with 37,000 miles. The bio at the end of this year was gonna be about 35,000, and I'm looking at selling our 2015 bus number one, and that has a Max Force engine where all the other ones are coming engines now. And that has 77,000 miles, and so we're gonna get kind of a quote on, on a trade-in value and then kind of go from there, so. Guy from Homeland was gonna be up last week, but due to the weather, rescheduled, and then we'll have some more numbers to kind of work with on that, but there again, just making sure we stay ahead with our fleet on that as far as leasing and buying and looking at the cost effectiveness of when we buy those, how many more years are we gonna get out of that bus and knowing that it's not gonna worth, be worth as much at the end of its life there too, so. Next week, Thursday, gonna take Ryan and Jake with me down to a master's leadership seminar down in Baxter, and so we'll professional growth for them as well. Nice leadership to our seminar with the gal from South Florida, talking about both union, non-union type leadership roles, so that'll be good for them to come down with, working on that. And then in May here on the 8th, do the auto lift and voice inspection and training. If they don't fit out of war, they're gonna be coming up and doing that. And then I sent you guys a proposal after my EA for lockout, takeout site assessment that'll be looking at scheduling their games within our operations, but just wanted to keep that on your radar that there's a reminder that they have that assessment done with our shops and any equipment there, and that's another thing I'm working on, so.
And since our last meeting, we've had boiler failure again. We're working through some stuff there, and we've had some flooding in the basement of the lawn that went around and above the sandbagging that we had detoured it previously.
The tunnels over the weekend here, so it's not very deep, but it still has water on the floor. And then we had a little leak on the ECFE end, but I think that was water that got up into the units and dripped down, so we're just kind of waiting. Went up there today and it was all dry, so waiting for our next rainfall to see what happens from that and to verify if there was a leak. The roof looked really good, so I'm thinking there's with that wind that we had and the snow kind of, you know, internally to ductwork and then leak out through that, so I'm monitoring that.
Any questions?
You said there's three, two leased buses coming?
Yes, yeah, October, yeah.
Okay.
So, those are the three that we had ordered up from last year.
Okay.
We hope that they'll be here by July, but what the, there again, we knew it was gonna take some time to get on here, and that's why we had to be proactive on that, which there again, we will get the next three that are gonna be, you know, for 2024, I guess would be, so.
Yeah, okay.
The table again with that, and that's gonna make you have, you know, buy them one that's, and then just don't get those, so. Yeah, okay. All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on, and to item six, approve the consent agenda consisting of March, March 27th, 2023 regular meeting. Payrolls through the month of March 2023 in the amount of $649,571.06 and accounts payable for the month of March 2023 in the amount of seven, excuse me, $671,499.62 and electronic fund transfers for the month of March 2023 in the amount of $750,508.19. Okay, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda is ready.
I'll make.
Danielle.
Mark.
Mark. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Moving on to item seven, personnel. Item A is a motion to accept the resignation from Jennifer Prado, key club advisor effective June 2nd, 2023. Do we have a motion?
I'll make.
Motion by Shelley.
Support.
Support by Cindy. Comments or questions?
Thank you for my good, hard work on that.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Moving on to item eight, administrative business. Item A is a motion to adopt the resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make.
Motion by Shelley. There's support.
Support.
Request Cindy. Comments or questions?
This is, this is just something that you ever use.
Every year.
Yeah, it's an annual.
Yeah, doesn't necessarily mean somebody's gonna.
Something's happened.
It's every year it happens.
Because there's dates we have to meet then.
End of April, I think it is, yeah. Okay, so we have comments or questions? Okay, this is a roll call vote. We have a roll call, please.
Director Soder?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Cardisano?
Yes.
Director Laffey?
Yes.
Director Casey?
Yes.
Orchela.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll take these policies one at a time. IMF is a motion to approve policy number 420, students and employees with sexually transmitted infections and diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Danielle. Second by Mark. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Item C, a motion to approve policy number 421, gifts to employees and school board members. Do we have a motion? Motion by Cindy.
Support.
And supported by Shelley. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Item D is a motion to approve policy number 422, policies incorporated by reference. Is there a motion? Motion by Shelley. There's support.
Support.
Vote by Danielle. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Item E is a motion to approve policy number 423, employee-student relationships. Have a motion. Motion by Cindy.
Support.
Vote by Danielle. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Item F is a motion to approve policy number 424, a licensed status. Do we have a motion? Motion by Shelley, support. Support by Mark. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Item G is a motion to approve policy number 427, work rule limits for certain special education teachers. Do we have a motion?
I'll make.
Motion by Shelley. There's support. Cheryl's support. Comments or questions?
I didn't get that one in my.
I mean, I have, when I looked it up.
Yeah, I didn't have it in mind either, but.
That's okay. It was just lost.
It was the third.
I, I would be able to pick it up.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve policy number 427. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Item H, under administrative business, is a motion to approve the consulting agreement between Hibbing, Chisholm, and the Watson Consulting Group as presented. Do we have a motion? So, motion by Mark. Support by Cindy. Any discussion? We'll be getting into this when we get into our discussion phase of the meeting. Okay, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, question carries. Thank you. All right. Okay, moving on to discussion. I put together a little something, and that's why we're open for discussion, because we have to what all members are looking for as far as that goes. And I know I've got it. Okay, so I put together this little search timeline, and seeing as all the applications close on the 15th, which is Saturday, I thought that we could have the 17th and the 18th for board members to review the applicants individually. Give you two days to come in and maybe in Adrian's office, but you guys have gone through the drill before, but Mark, you haven't. And we come in, and there'll be no names. It'll be letters, A, B, C, whatever it is, okay? And you go through them.
Yeah, so Lisa, you're gonna remove the names.
Well, it's gonna be too hard for me to do that, because.
That's how it was done before. We can't see the names. We've got to have them lighted out and made a copy. You got to make a copy and wipe them out for us because we can't see the names because it's a non-bias. We can't pick somebody because we know who they are. This is what we went through before, so we don't know names. We're literally picking them up, we're picking them because of.
Their qualifications.
Their qualifications and what is up.
I just want to know, is that a?
No.
Minister of Sports?
No, it's not. So I already checked into it.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, I mean.
It's not, because, I mean, you, you see it, and you can just, like, see the school that they taught, or at, right now, and you can instantly find out what it is. That's not at all.
I guess I didn't go in and dig the last time. I just, I literally read through and didn't know names, and that was what we had all done before.
Well, that's what I was just wondering though, if we checked into the, um.
It's not. I did check them.
That's what I was curious about. So, I mean, I can understand maybe doing the first thing, you know, his name, and then the rest of it.
With no his name.
Because there's.
Well, that's, that's what we did. It's our initial tick of how many we're gonna have.
The applications are, because the app, the tracker system I have, when I print them off, their name is right in front, but then their name is multiple places throughout the whole stuff, because I asked, you know, the resume transcripts, and, I mean, it's on multiple documents. I already checked. One of them, I think there's 22 places the names are on.
Well, and I, I personally don't see that as a big issue, because every one of us would want to be able to check into them anyway. So then we have to know who they are. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right.
I mean, for me, I, I don't know, maybe it's because I'm 64 years old that, I mean, just because I know who they are doesn't basically mean I'm gonna want them leading my school. I don't know, but.
You know, Cindy's.
But a personal, but just that comment there, they could have all the qualifications and actually be good, but because of your personal relationship with them, that's why you're not, you're.
No, 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 that's not what I said.
But that's what I'm saying. That's why if you take your names off, there isn't that.
That's not what I said, no. It's not gonna matter to me, one way or another, because we're gonna, we want to be able to investigate them anyway. Because.
As of today, I think we have six, and so this morning, I think we're still gonna get two more, from what I understand, now.
Eight, that's a nice round number. What do we have last, at like 15 or something like that?
One year, we had 27, so. But we didn't do it that, we did it through, but, you know, I see Cindy's point about the names.
But you're right.
I just, you know, I don't know who they are. I wouldn't know who they, and again, if they're local, I might recognize them. I don't know. But if they're not, I don't know who they are. So you look at what they've done, and then you ask yourself a question, is this candidate worth being interviewed?
Yeah.
Is it not?
But I think a person can do that better if they don't know the name and they don't recognize who it is. We are looking at that person as just a person, not somebody's neighbor not initially, and that's what we did the last time, and I, when asked, you know.
But now they have a different system, so how do we, how do we do that? I mean, what, does Lisa sit there and go through the whole thing and cross out every name, and, I mean, I, I just don't think that's.
So, again.
Gonna work, honestly.
So, in the resumes, you got the big name on the top, I get that. How many times have they mentioned the whole name in those resumes? A lot?
First and last.
Oh, like, I mean, this.
I mean, there's like, the average number, I think, in the packet that they're sending these 18 pages.
Oh, wow.
And then every refer, or letter.
Well, that's how our, our resumes we went through were thick for each person last time. I mean, it wasn't just a couple pages that we went through. I mean, I was in here for a good four hours going through these resumes.
But you look at, you know, one page is, you know, their job history, the next one is their education, the next one is their res, you know, their references, and then we go down like that, but, you know.
I, I mean, as much as I know it's a work, I, I don't think we should be seeing their names for the initial applicant. That's my opinion.
Well, I see we follow whatever the Minnesota school board says we should do. I mean, that, that we should do. I don't think we should.
Let, I'll get ahold of.
Terry. Terry.
Who?
Terry Morrow.
Terry Morrow.
Yeah.
And find out from him, do we need to have names on this?
Yeah.
And I'll let everybody know. But again, what I looked at was 17th and 18th for, for members to look at applicants. I did send Jackie of, an email, because she asked, and I told her what was going on. And then on the 19th, that's when I have our working, working session scheduled. So we sit here and we discuss the candidates with names and everything, or maybe not.
On the second, the first, 17th and 18th, are we numbering or just looking?
Just reviewing.
I think it's just reviewing.
Last time we picked our top, our top so many, yeah, we rated them.
One, two, three, you know, and then the decision is, who do we interview? Do we interview all of them? Three of them? That's the decision we have to make.
And that's what we kind of picked at the working session the last time, because I went through and I have all of our papers from that, and actually, when Bob stepped in my office, I had my little notepad from the last time, and it was labeled A, and then all the things that, you know, I liked, and then, because my little notepad, I could take with me. Because you can't be writing their names on and then take it out of the building either. That's why if you have A, B.
Just, I think, by state statute, if you narrow it down to three, then those three names become automatically public.
Right.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah.
Because that, that's what it was, is it, the names were not public. We didn't find out the names until we picked our A, B, C, whatever our three or four applicants were that we were doing, then the names, and then.
Well, I know for me, it's gonna be A, B, or C anyway, and it's gonna be, I'll, I'll probably read that thing, and then I won't remember who that kid is anyway. There'll be A, and then B, and then C.
If they're finalists and going to be interviewed, their names are gonna be public.
Yes, yes.
Well, that's, that, that was after our initial. So that's what happened after the 17th and 18th, the school board, like, so what happened the last time is us as school board members, we went in, we went through all the applicants, we picked and we rated the, who we wanted to see, and then we matched all that up together, because we had a rate sheet. And then we, and then it was kind of consensus, like, all right, well, three said A, four said B, and then we picked, we, we said, all right, there's gonna be four inter, that are interviewed. Once that came out, then it was A is so-and-so, B, you know, and then we picked those four people, and that's when it was, I mean, they're being interviewed. It's, it's out there. That's who it is. And then.
And I think that whole process will work still.
Oh, I think it will, yeah.
Even if we don't have to, I mean, I still say label them A, B, C, D, whatever, but find out if we have to eliminate their names, that's all. I, I still think that process is the best process.
Yeah. Oh, I thought it worked great the last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And working session, April 19th, that is the week Jackie can be here, so.
Yeah, is that for everybody?
April 19th, at what time?
Well, just, you know, after school, or what are we talking here?
Yeah, she said four o'clock would be okay.
Okay.
If we could do earlier that day, that would be better, my husband's on a.
Oh, and she said she can't do anything earlier than four.
And I can't either, because I have some session.
So you can do four or after, yeah.
I can do four.
Oh, okay, nothing earlier.
But I, I gotta be, yep, I gotta be able to get to my kids and get them to, I gotta bring them home from school, and then I gotta bring them to skating.
So four o'clock will work, and I might be a few minutes late.
Four o'clock, four o'clock.
Okay, that's all right, we can hold up.
Four PM on the 19th.
This is scheduled.
We'll just put you on the list last, that's all.
Okay. So, 19th, four o'clock.
And the 17th and 18th is whenever we can come in, because it's set time.
Can I come in here?
What's that?
Do you wanna?
Yeah.
Wanna do it in here, because then I can have the.
Yeah, we can do it in here, yeah.
Yeah, forever. It doesn't matter.
Yeah. We'll just come in by ourselves and do our thing, okay. And then after the 19th, we have, we decide who we're gonna interview. And so that's the first round with us.
Okay.
And I am, I have. And um, I am, I have some questions, I know a couple members have questions from last time. I don't, doesn't matter to me what questions we use, cause the last batch were pretty good. Um, but I have a list and and I think we'll put them in your packets to take a look at them, there's different topics, there's, you know, finance, there's education, there's referenda, there's all of this stuff that's in there, um.
Bob?
Yes.
So when we did interviews before, we literally started in the morning and we went all afternoon. I mean.
Yeah.
It took quite some time for those interviews, the twenty-fourth is also a school board meeting.
Depending on the.
Well.
The twenty-one?
The twenty-fourth, so that means we're gonna be here all day for interviews and school board. Meeting at five o'clock.
I mean, I just, I, I, that's a date I picked out, I mean, we we can change it, we can do it on a Tuesday, I mean.
Did Jackie give you any interviews?
When is, yeah, Jackie should be here for that that part, yes.
And nineteenth, it can't be a working session.
Well, yeah, I don't.
It's gotta be closed, right, Mom?
Yes. Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
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 The interviews. So.
I mean, to this, no, we're discussing, or discussion.
And discuss.
Closed session, it can't be public, you're right.
And why not?
If you do the nineteenth, it can't be.
Not public.
Well, I don't, working, that means the public can't.
So why is it called for?
Oh, decided to close.
Closed session, we're calling it to a closed session, not working session.
Closed.
A closed session.
Closed session. Um, well, can Jackie be here that last week in April?
In April twenty-eight.
We need to know what day, cause we need Jackie a part of that interview process.
Yeah, we do.
The twenty-fourth.
All members should be present for the interviews.
So, if we can't do the first round of interviews on the twenty-fourth, what's a good date? I mean, I don't wanna keep everybody here all day, that's the last thing, I just put that date on there.
Well, I think, I think looking even at that first week of May too.
I'm gonna be gone, um, the Friday until the, like, the third of May, the Wednesday.
I feel like we're the first week of May.
And third, I'm, third and fourth, I can't do it.
And I can do the twenty-fourth if.
I can do the twenty-fourth.
If any, if Jackie, if I'll ask, yeah. And we probably, depending upon how many we're gonna interview, that would determine our time, I assume.
And this would be all day, right, this is.
It says all day, mm-hmm.
Well, and again.
We, I think we started our first ones at like.
It depends on how many we narrow it down.
Yeah.
Well, that's the point, yeah, I mean, if we have six or seven or whatever, and we only decide we wanna do three or four.
Yeah, then we can do it now.
You know, how long does an interview take? An hour or forty-five minutes, I think we schedule?
Uh, I think they were longer than that. Cause we, we asked all those questions, we had a set time, we tried to stay on schedule, but.
Yeah.
You like to have a little time in between, so the applicants kind of miss each other.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, right.
What we did the last time is they went down to superintendent's office, and then Cheyenne went and got him and brought him here after everyone's left.
Twenty-fourth work for me, I guess.
Cindy, how about you?
Yep.
I just asked you.
Shelley?
Uh, yeah, it works for me.
It does for me too, but I just need to, my husband's on a shutdown.
No, I get that, so let's first figure out how many we're gonna interview, then we'll figure out how much time we need.
Yes.
And, you know, and then again, we have board meeting that night, so.
Oh, yeah, we do, don't we?
See, that's, you know, that's what I mean, if we can, if you wanna change the date, again, I I don't know what's good for everybody, I'm footloose and fancy free, let's put it to you that way.
And the twenty-seventh, if you do those interviews with everybody, I don't have to be here anyway for that, right? I mean, that's Thursday, I, and I believe it.
Not for that one. Some remembers weren't part of that one, no. Mm-mm.
But then the twenty-eighth.
And then, the twenty-eighth is if we have, let's just say we have two finalists, just.
Right.
Then they get interviewed on the twenty-eighth, and um.
I can't do that.
You know, so.
I just feel like we're like pushing this all to get it done within like a week and a half of each other, I mean, I feel like we're squeezing this all in right now, when the school year.
Oh, we kinda have to.
Well, I know, but the school year doesn't end till June, so we could still, I mean, you look out,
Yeah.
even that first whole week of May, that's still plenty of time to do all these interviews and to do all of that, and give us time to go through these, to pick who we're gonna do and give them time to get here for the interviews. I mean, we're looking at telling them, alright, you gotta, we're picking them on the nineteenth at five o'clock, that means Thursday, you're gonna send them a message and say, hey, on the nineteenth, these are your interview times. On Monday, you gotta be, be here Monday.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's still, but that's Wednesday till Monday, I mean, they know they're gonna be interviewed.
It's not gonna be Wednesday, it's gonna be Thursday, cause.
I mean.
I don't know.
I think it'll, it'll work out one way or another, looks up to see what our base schedules are.
Well.
And I just, it's gonna be tight for me, this, when you have a husband on a shutdown.
And on the interviews. Yeah, we all have such things.
Yeah, we're not going, I, I get it, but that's why we're all trying to figure it out.
Yeah, so, this is suggestion, suggestions. If anything else works better, I I don't.
Oh, she can't do it.
She can't?
Nope. I just asked her, can you interview on Monday, April twenty-fourth, all day? Nope, so.
Do you wanna ask her, what day is she, what's her name? Well, that week, and that's where the following week, you said you're gone the first.
I am gone from, yeah, the Friday, the twenty-eighth until May third.
Okay, so for argument's sake, if we push this back to May, to the tenth, just for argument.
That's Mother's Day. May tenth?
Happy birthday.
May tenth. You can still do that, the eighth is Mother's Day.
Okay, so if we.
May tenth is Mother's Day, I've got one.
On a Wednesday?
May tenth is Mother's Day, is what it says right here.
Oh, that's not Mother's Day.
Wait a minute.
Mother's Day is the fourteenth.
That's got to be on a Sunday.
This one says Mother's Day on my calendar.
Your calendar's wrong.
It's always on a Sunday.
It's always on a Sunday.
Well, it does say Mother's Day there.
Oh, your calendar is wrong.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Okay, let's run this up the flagpole.
But do you wanna, I I mean, I like the timeline, going on a Monday and doing all the interviews in one week, but also can they be here in all those days in one week?
Well, that's a great question, you know, I mean, I don't know where these people are coming from.
It's a nice job that I know, I would probably rearrange my schedule for it.
I mean, I don't know where they're coming from, I don't know, you know, I have no clue.
That's true, that's true.
Cause probably everybody's on a super dependent search right now. What day does Jackie have available, alright?
Waiting, waiting, she's very sorry.
Why don't we just wait until we find out when she.
She's writing right now.
And she's dot-dot-dodding.
Yeah, she's dot-dot-dodding. Yeah, Jackie, they set up, she told me that they set up a whole bunch, okay, so four twenty-eight, five one, and five five.
I can do five one or five five, or the twenty.
So Cindy's on five one.
Or the twenty-eighth.
Are you on the twenty-eighth, Cindy? When do you leave?
Twenty-eighth is a Friday?
I mean, there's a Friday.
Yeah, and that's when I leave, so, but, I mean, you guys can do it without me, I trust you.
No, no, we need to.
No, we need to have all the board members here.
Now, we have to be here.
I can do the fifth, I mean, if we do it early.
I can, my fifth is wide open.
Okay. May fifth for the first round?
Yes, yes, interview day.
Okay. First interview, it's not April twenty-fourth, it's May fifth. Okay. Then.
We can still do our working session and all that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, what we have to try to do, Lisa?
I would. Mm-hmm.
Is, we have to set up interviews with these candidates with the groups, AFSCME, Ed Minnesota, Admin, and Students. That should probably all happen in one day.
One day, yep, I remember it.
And.
Yeah, it was all one day.
So. What day, I mean.
Well, well, if we're interviewing them on a Friday, what day are, are we gonna pick a finalist that day? Have a closed session after?
Well, it says here, we have to wait for feedback from the groups, we want their input.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I have, you know, feedback from everybody, May eighth.
Wait. Okay, but you have finalist interviews with AFSCME. It's the finalist that we choose that goes to the.
So if there's two finalists or three finalists, whatever, then they go to AFSCME.
Yeah. So when are we choosing?
Well, those are the same people that we're deciding on April nineteenth, who are sending forward, so then whoever we interview, though the students, AFSCME, and everybody else gets to interview.
The same groups, okay.
Yes.
The same group.
The same group, yeah.
So if they've got a weekend break, even if they're out of town, and then come back Monday, the eighth.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sure, the last couple of times you did this, you had interviews with students.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And public, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And what is Ed Minnesota?
Teachers.
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 They all just select.
They select individual, individual staff.
They select certain people, and students who, like Student Council.
Yeah.
They select what students are gonna interview them and.
And they're all instructed in what they can, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and then for public, what we asked, Shannon from the chamber, and a couple other.
From the chamber, yeah.
People in the community that were, yeah.
Community, yeah.
You know.
Involved with the community.
A good idea maybe would be to get parents of kids here to, you know, seeing as how somebody's gonna be running this for us.
Oh.
The real. And May eighth then for that interview though?
Okay, May eighth for the um groups, for AFSCME and them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so then.
Administrators. Admin and students.
And then we're gonna have to do the, cause Jackie said week of May fifteenth is absolutely, the whole week is out for her.
Well, and I would think if we get those interviews.
Yeah, Jackie.
Did we, did we have a second interview with, the school board didn't have a second interview with the groups?
No, we just do the finalists, we knock it down, we decide, so we have to have another little, um.
I don't remember doing a second interview with them, after the AFSCME group, then we did.
We got it down to two people, and then we, cause we interviewed like.
I thought we just picked, I didn't think there was a second interview where they came in.
No, we had a second interview when I came in, I don't remember that either.
I don't remember a second interview.
I do. Remember it was, we got it down to two people, it was that.
Villa Bron. Villa Bron, was it Kukai or Villa Bron?
Yeah. Villa Bron, I think.
Villa Bron and Adrian.
Yeah, but we interviewed a lot more than that.
I think we did, six or seven.
Interviewed, did, yeah, we interviewed like seven, and then we narrowed it down.
I don't remember interviewing seven.
We might have.
We had the guy from Roma, that was really good.
Oh, yeah, we did, yeah. Initially, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought there was like four.
So then we'll probably in between May.
We need to have a working session that week then, a closed session.
Closed session.
So.
In April.
So May.
No, no.
No, in May, after the student interviews and get their feedback. So like the tenth, that Wednesday? Cause that would give them two date, that, you know, a day to get us their input.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May tenth, May tenth, yeah.
And then.
You guys, it's the Mexico Mother's Day, just so you know, it's not on my calendar. Good to know.
Thanks for reminding me, May, okay, May tenth will be.
So I gotta tell them. Right.
That's another work, that's a work session.
Closed session.
Close work, closed session.
Um, what time, can we do four o'clock that day?
That's fine.
Sweet, and if we have to adjust the time for Jackie?
Yeah, no, that'll be fine, sure.
Yeah.
Four P M, closed tenth session, yep. And then we'll have our two finalists.
We should do it right away on May twelve.
On that Friday, have them come back again? I don't remember, I think we should, I don't remember doing a second interview. Huh?
I thought you just took our information and your information and anyway, that's what I think we did.
And we picked it. Yeah, that's what we did, and then we said, you're, you're it.
Okay, so.
I don't think we have a, we didn't have a second.
We, we, we did our, we did our, we picked ours, we rated them.
You guys were their second interview.
Yep, and then we rated them, and then we gave back.
I don't remember them having to come back a third time.
Yeah.
I feel like that's too much.
Okay, so then, but we'll still.
Well.
Unless we're like completely, like, we just can't choose between one or two.
Campbell.
And then maybe, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
If it's something like that.
So then at that closed session, we can just decide who we're gonna hire, is that what we're saying?
That's, yeah, that's what I, I would think, the tenth is when we would decide and then reach out to them on the eleventh.
Yeah, you can't officially do it during closed session, that's, no, it has to be.
Right, right.
So would we o- open it to a working session at that point, or?
Did we do close and then working to announce in the same night?
Well, then. Cause when's our next meeting is the twenty-second, right?
Yeah.
Right.
But Jackie's gone the fifteenth, so that's kind of.
That's different through, yeah, that's why I'm saying that first, that, second week of May is when we should get everything, try to get everything completed, and then.
So do we have a closed session and then do an open to a working session, is that, do we?
We have like a.
Hmm. On the tenth, it would, I miss what you said.
You can. Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna.
We're gonna discuss and pick.
You have to, okay, yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna offer a job to someone.
We need to then go to an open, a working session.
Because the last time, we did a working session, and then I called and asked him if he wanted the job.
Okay.
And then I called the other ones that we had picked and said you were not chosen, thank you, and all of that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that'll be plenty of time.
So if we did the May tenth though, do a closed session, kind of put all of our ducks in a row, and then opened it up to a working session at five P M, say. And then we announce who we're picking and that we're offering the job. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So you're gonna give one hour, basically one hour?
Well, the working session will just follow, we'll try to get it on time, but we'll see where discussion takes us too.
Did we receive ahead of time from the stakeholders, like, their rating system, I can't remember, do you guys remember?
I think we did.
From the who?
From like the stakeholders, yeah, yeah, we get their rating systems back ahead of time.
The students and admin.
And comments, yeah, yeah.
And comments, and then we were able to review that um before.
Well, we should, I mean, if they're doing, they, they're gonna do, there's, those interviews are gonna be during the day, and it was almost like, as soon as they were done, we were getting an email by the end of the day, not you, but the last.
Cheyenne.
Cheyenne, she got it to us right away. So it was like the end of the day, so we had, you know, one full day to look over their feedback on where they were at. And then we discussed it too, cause they rated it too, we gave them the same rating sheet that we used, with your A, B, C, B, and. And at that point, A was whoever, B was whoever, and we kinda just put their names to their rating. Yeah.
Well, then, somebody better look at this, at this thing too, because it has those same things.
I know. I know. Okay, so let, let's just.
We, we don't have a finalist interview, that's taken out.
Okay, so let's just finalize what we got going here for the superintendent thing, and we'll move on, so what, so the seventeenth and eighteenth, we go and look at the applications.
Yes.
We write down notes.
Yes.
What we like, maybe what we don't like, things like that, so the nineteenth, then at four o'clock, we have a closed session to discuss the candidates, pros, cons, all of that stuff, at four o'clock.
Yes.
Okay, May fifth, I have here first round interviews with the school board.
Yes.
What time do we wanna do that? I mean.
Starts at eight.
Eight?
I'm pretty sure, we try to do it if there are people are here.
Can we, uh, cause.
Then they get called first and.
Can we start at eight thirty?
Yeah, I mean.
Can we start at eight thirty, cause I gotta get my kids.
Eight thirty. Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so May fifth, eight thirty.
That we started doesn't matter.
A M.
Eight thirty A M first meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so then we have, the twenty-seventh is gone, we don't do anything there, right?
Right.
It's gonna be May eighth, that's gonna be finalists interviews.
Well, May twenty-fourth, we still have a regular school board meeting, this is the fourth Monday, but not on this day.
So. So May eighth, then, we have interviews with AFSCME, Ed Minnesota, Administration, and Students.
Yes.
Okay, and that's all day, so Tara, you can spread the word. Okay, all day.
Well, we'll have to contact the union reps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they'll pick people, how many people do we want on these committees?
You don't want a lot.
You don't want.
The last time they just ranged over this table.
The kids weren't with us, the kids were on their own.
They were on a different one, yeah.
Yeah. The kids, I, they, didn't they just go to the auditorium and you guys went to the auditorium, right?
They, they did their own.
Oh, right here, right there.
We all were here.
So the interviewers were on the, the board table and the candidate sat there, cause Adrian, his hands were shaking.
That's right.
But, and then, so then the students in each group, those couple people that were picked to interview came in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, their advisor, whoever you guys had with their. Was it like keep, where group that was you guys had come somewhere recently?
Yeah, it was either Jennifer, who got them, or it was Kovar.
And then for each grade.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, whoever was in charge of the student council.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause government, I mean, obviously it makes sense, I'm on government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that is on May eighth, ASME and the groups, okay?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
May tenth. Closed session for us at four o'clock.
Yep.
Finalist interviews.
That works for Jackie, both of those.
Right?
Perfect.
Okay, finalist.
Closed session at four P M and then five P M working session.
We interview at four.
Wait.
You don't interview again?
No, that's just.
You're picking.
We're picking.
You're discussing.
We're not doing a third interview, their second interview is with students and ASME.
Okay. And then five o'clock is a working session.
Yes.
And what are we gonna talk about?
We're just basically gonna announce.
We're gonna announce who we're picking, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's it, just super fast.
That's it.
And then, then.
And we're gonna just announce it and then we have to bring it to the regular meeting and.
We're gonna have to, actually, you can do it, you can do it at your.
Order chemistry. Working session?
Working session. Yeah.
Just make sure that, that it's posted and everything.
Yeah, and then, I guess, I won't even call a working session, I would call it a special meeting.
Okay.
Cause the working session is just announcing what's not.
Session?
Yeah.
Good call.
Yeah, good idea, Mark.
Well, we need to tell the person, if you're talking, go to it on the tenth.
They have to accept the job first.
Step off.
To that column first, yeah.
During the close.
That's who we'll just, that's when we're gonna decide, and then we'll offer to them after that, yeah.
We, yeah, we can't offer it after the closed session, it still has to be, it's gonna be.
You're gonna off.
Yeah, who we're offering. Cause we're not gonna call, yeah, we're not gonna call them at the closed session, and then we'd call them after.
Right.
After.
After the special.
They kind of old column.
After the special.
All right, that sounds good.
Okay.
I think we got it, Jackie's good at those dates.
Yep.
Good.
So I get the honors.
To tell other, the nose, sorry. I hope I don't know.
So you can't stand the heat, get out of the bar.
Well, I sent you the dates.
Okay, so we let that squirt away, good, thank you. Now. These, this here again, um. With Mr. Tom Watson. I found out this morning that Hitting has invited him to their Wednesday, May seventeen board game, he invited him. I threw down May eighth, I mean, I don't, again, is, is it that important? We could pick another date, I don't care.
It's at a regular board meeting, maybe?
Well, what concerns me about that is. If this gets long-winded, we could be here for, you know, a few hours. I don't know. So, you know, he's, he's, what he's gonna do is talk to us about things that we could collaborate on and probably go over quite a few things. But, again, the. Premise of this. Is to find topics that we can agree on, he's gonna have Hitting's ideas and he'll have ours. And then, there's gonna be a committee of each board. That's going to sit down and finalize this stuff and we get to work on it. So, I'll be looking for volunteers after, I mean, at this, you know. I.
Well, I guess, okay, I guess I just wanted to see both boards getting on the same page.
That's kind of what we're trying to do.
Can't we like push this back to June, though, I mean, do we have to do it May?
No, no, we don't, we don't, I just, I just put it down.
This is a lot going on.
We could do, we could do it in June.
Yeah, I see, there's just too much going on with us trying to hire a superintendent and, yeah, I just don't.
That's true, since our other stuff is pushed back.
We haven't met with Hitting's board for, you know, a few years.
So.
Let's have it be a summer thing.
Hitting's meeting with them, May seventeenth.
On my birthday.
Okay.
I'll bring the cake.
Happy birthday. So Hitting is meeting with Tom Watson on the seventeenth at their board meeting, their meeting is on the seventeenth.
Okay.
So, what do we wanna do? It doesn't matter, I mean.
Let's look at some June dates, I agree with Cindy. We've got a lot planned in the next two months.
Because I'll be sitting on the board next month.
June, what's our first June meeting?
Our first June meeting is the twelfth.
The twelfth, so why, he could come and meet with us on the twelfth.
Both for June, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah.
And.
At a regular meeting or beforehand?
Well, again, see.
Well, that's just to go over some twelfth, I don't think it's gonna be long-winded, what's gonna be long-winded is when you get two boards together.
Zero wrong.
No twelfth.
But what they're trying to do is to get ideas from all of us, ideas from all of them. Committees, three people.
So couldn't we just have our board ma- meeting either just then end it and then just go into a working session?
Sure we could, we could do that, get our business, get our business.
I mean, that would, yeah, because then it would still be open to the public and.
Yeah, get our business taken care of and then, yeah, so we can do June twelfth after board meeting.
Get our business done and.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll make sure with him, I'll check with him.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure he's available.
Okay.
Look at us, getting stuff done.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And the next thing.
You're killing us.
Which, I know I am, killing myself. The next thing, uh. We're gonna have some board training with John Flossom. And he's done this for a hundred years, so we're gonna have training on numerous subjects. And he's just gonna go over what violations are and what we should be saying and not saying and things like that, so. He's been around for forty-some years, he knows the drill. So let's set a date for that, and I don't care when, I don't care if it's July, I don't care if it's whatever.
September.
I'm. Uh, I mean, what the, if he's, if it's a lot of us, what is their schedule like?
Well, I have to reach out to him.
Okay.
He said he was available in April and I thought, oh, God, no, that's not happening.
Did he say approximately length of time?
No, he did not.
Okay.
So what I could do is reach out to him and say, John, how long would this take?
Yeah.
And then. If it's an hour, let's just say it is.
Yeah.
We can schedule it for the twelfth of June if he's available. I'll reach out with that, we have plenty of time to set that up.
Oh, twelfth of June, no, that's Tom Watson day.
Yeah, June twelfth.
Oh.
You mean like July, whatever, one of our, buttoned up to one of our meetings in July or something, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's fine, that'll work, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter, whatever, it works for you guys.
I think it works best for, for Jackie, if we button it up to a meeting, yeah.
So why don't we see if we can schedule it for the first board meeting in, uh.
July.
In, uh.
July ten.
July ten.
In July, July what?
Ten.
Okay.
Okay. How long is?
It's, yeah, okay, yeah.
I'll find out.
But we'll just put it down as a.
I will find out.
I mean, our summer board meetings usually go pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not much more on.
But with everything we have going on right now.
Right, July ten, four o'clock, okay.
Okay.
After board meeting. Yeah, cause then we, at least we can get our business done.
Yeah, so probably be like five, eight.
You're getting all this.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that won't be much.
Lisa, do you want me to send you a picture of all my?
Nope.
She's got that in, oh, no, she's got it.
Okay. Now, the interview itself, that's open, right, when you're interviewing the candidates?
Yeah.
That's open, right?
It has to be.
It has to be.
Has to be open.
Yeah.
We strongly encourage the other candidates.
Yeah, they would be.
Cause we interviewed some via Zoom, which I didn't think was fair, cause other candidates could really kind of listen in if they wanted to, but.
That'll be.
Yeah.
It wouldn't bother them, at least that, you know.
Yeah. I, I would think that that would be a.
It has to be open to the public.
Yeah, well, to the public, I get that, but, I mean, the candidates that are.
Like you said, the ones that we had come in and we just sent them to the superintendent's office, nobody ever came and sat in with us, though, didn't those last month?
They, they can, but.
Yeah.
I wouldn't advise it.
Weird. Great. And then after all that's done, we'll just wait for the school to be built.
Did you guys? There's something up, or no?
Um, yeah, we're done with discussion, so.
Well, I'm just wondering about if you guys all got the email about, uh, taking that survey or that.
I, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we did it.
I can imagine, twenty minutes, just like it started.
I have not done it.
Jackie did hers today, so.
I forgot some.
But that's okay, I mean, it's just whenever, get them done.
Yeah, I kind of have a question, the questions, I was like, you know, they apply to us as a part, you know what I mean, but.
There's no time limit.
And it's just the board being interviewing, you don't have admin or anybody else sit in? Not during the first class.
No, we didn't, no.
Admin was in the second.
Admin is during the.
Okay.
Teachers and, um, yeah.
Okay.
We gotta make sure that you'll mesh well with whoever we hire, right?
Yeah, you get the final say, Lisa, then.
You're in the interview group, you and, what's his name now?
Lisa, do we know, just, uh, how to put it in a public meeting because of some. Stuff that's being said about the district? Um, how many kids did we have graduate last year, cause I know I handed out.
Forty.
Maybe forty. And we're running at about forty again this year?
Yeah, Mark, Mark said there's forty this year.
Okay. Just don't check.
So, do we have, uh, any other info, oh, we've got the enrollment report, uh.
Which you dropped the gears, huh?
Yeah.
Kinda.
We gotta look at what grade levels I'm dropping. It's not actual, I mean, it's not really grades, it's the preschool.
That's, well, it's, it, the preschool is because they go to, we don't collect any funding, so they go there.
Right. But that's where our numbers change, is because of preschool. It's not a whole lot, I mean, we're holding pretty steady in all of our grades.
We lost, we lost a couple, it's, it's, but the last time we didn't, so we're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does, it does this.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any other information that members wish to pass on for the good of the group?
No.
No.
Without objection, we leave the journey. They said six oh four. I'm popping, I'm popping, purpose.
Is Adrian one of the applicants?
Oh, yeah.